Said Phoenix, didn't it?
Good evening, everyone. We're going to begin our meeting tonight with our invitation by Councilman Chris Gill.
Lord, as we come to you tonight, God, and we're gathered here tonight for the business of the city, I ask for your, for this council, for your guidance, your wisdom and support as we begin this meeting and conduct the business of our great city. God, help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow close as a group, as a body, and let's make the best decisions for our community. God, I ask that you fill us tonight with your wisdom as we make those decisions that affect everyone around us. Lord, let us be reminded that everything that we do here tonight and all that we accomplish, that it first be pleasing to you and then for the greater good of our city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the cause of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now call the order of this city council meeting, Okeo, West Virginia, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Will now have our roll call.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Councilor-at-large Bill Hanabas.
Here.
Councilman from Ward One, Terry Van Buskirk.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Diana Janey.
Here.
Counselors from Ward Two, Tim Briscus.
Here.
P.J. Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Thank you. We now have our reading and approval of minutes. Some of you all, I'm sure, have read the, the motion to approve, accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Maybe in a second.
I second them.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Sure you've all read the treasurer's report as well? Can we get a motion to accept?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to table that because we did not receive the financial report till very last minute, and I know I have not read it.
Okay.
I second it.
All right, we have motion in a second to table the treasurer's report. All those in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? All right, motion is carried. Thank you. Any correspondence today? Oh, I did get a letter from my government about the Christmas parade. I'll share that with you all in the email because we all want to participate in that. Any citizens comments? We have anybody sign up tonight?
Yes.
What's your name, ma'am?
Patricia Casta.
Would you want to?
I can't, I can't stand well. I have sciatic nerve problems. I'm sorry. There's a couple of things I want to address this evening. The first one being I did educate myself about retention ponds since I was at the August meeting, and the retention pond that they built is very impressive. I just have a couple of questions about it. That seems to be a low spot that was created when the bore lane was built. So what was the rationale after over fifty years for building a retention pond there? Um, we had a lot of flooding on the Euler Avenue. Are you talking about the retention ponds off nineteen?
Yes, okay.
There was a lot of flooding there on Euler Avenue, and that helps hold that water back, and it has tremendously helped flooding in that area. Um, my other question about it is, I couldn't really tell if it's on city, county, state, or private property. It's on the property, the church owns that property. So why did the city pay for the construction of it? Because it helped our city. We have an agreement with the church to have the pond there. Okay. Um, my next comment is. Who is the Director of Public Works for the city? Charlie Penal. Who? Charlie Penal, he's. Thank you. And the G I S director? Yeah, I was just, I looked up the meanings of G I S because I didn't know what that was. But anyhow, and my last thing I want to comment about, when I was here in August, I asked that you have the mailboxes across from my driveway removed out of the right of way. I didn't ask special treatment. I only asked that you people, you people, the laws, codes, and ordinances of this municipality equitably among all of the citizens as opposed to unilaterally, as you have history of doing. And apparently, you couldn't be bothered. In my opinion, that makes each and every one of you be elected, hired, or appointed guilty of dereliction of duty. Those mailboxes are nineteen feet out into the right of way. If I parked my car curbside to my property, that whole end of the street's going to be blocked because of those mailboxes. Do you intend to do anything about that?
Just have, I, I wrote on your street after the last meeting and I researched that that's the state, right of way. I know you disagree with that, or you did last month.
I currently have a map on its way from the State Department of Highways that will define that.
If it's correct, it will show that that was in state.
Well, I'm certain that the state knows what their responsibilities are. So. And inasmuch as I feel that you're all guilty of dereliction of duty, I would have went away. You wouldn't have heard from me again. But now I'm going to start educating the public about their city.
Would you let them know that you're talking about a state, right of way, instead of the city, right of way?
Once I get the map from the state, I certainly will. Because Lori Thomas assured me that no part of Central Avenue appears on the state map. So we apparently do disagree with that, and if, if my address is on Shuff Street, why is my address Central Avenue? Why is my response site if I call nine-one-one on Central Avenue?
I don't know that, but I, but I do know the mailboxes from the state of right of way.
Okay. We'll see. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other citizens comments? We have a breast cancer awareness month proclamation, which I will read from here so you don't have a lot of you. Whereas one in eight women will receive a breast cancer diagnosis in her lifetime. Whereas the American Cancer Society states breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among women in the United States and is the second-leading cause of cancer death among women. Whereas breast cancer death rates have dropped forty-four percent, forty-four percent since nineteen eighty-nine due to the treatment and detection advances. Whereas early detection is the path to survival of breast cancer. Awareness and symptoms, symptoms, detection methods, and ongoing care assist in positive outcomes. Whereas newer health staff, board of directors, patients, and community partners continue to raise awareness and direct patients to options for care. Now, therefore, I, Charles Briscoe, do hereby proclaim October twenty-two thousand twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we're going to paint our town pink and our town's park pink. In addition, Okeo, West Virginia will observe this to all of our citizens. Thank you. Moving down now to our unfinished business, our vacant building registration fees, discussion and decision.
Mr. Mayor, I had, uh, did a lot more research from the last time that we had brought this up. Uh, there was some questions about residents over top of commercial buildings. Uh, I was, uh, actually went through several municipalities, even out of the state, to see what their wording and verbiage would be. And it's really something that we don't want to, that we don't really need to put in there. Uh, so with that being said, I make a motion that we approve the vacant building registry as written, I mean, as suggested, and, uh, with it from there with the changes that we have.
I'll second that. Mayor, we have a motion in a second that we, that our vacant construction crew, we keep in, keeping in this is, all those in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, any question?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um. Chair, did you, did you have time or did you check with Fayetteville about their vacant?
They said that they don't even have nothing like that because they ain't got much to.
Well, and that, that's part of my point. Um. Uh, Fayetteville, right next to us, is a, is a very nice community. It's thriving. Um, it's a destination for our forest and it's doing well. Um, and they don't have a lot of property, vacant property. And the point is, vacant property, I know nobody wants it. I don't want vacant property in my municipality, uh. But I think it's, I think it's symptomatic of an economy. Um, and yes, we're improving, but I, I think vacant, vacant property, um, comes out of an economy not hitting on all eight cylinders. And, and I know, and I appreciate the fact that we can have honest conversations here, but, um, I'm not sure that an ordinance, a stricter ordinance, we have an ordinance on the books, and I'm not sure that a stricter ordinance require, you know, right off the bat, a registration fee of two hundred dollars. I don't, I don't think that's going to, in the long run, help to rectify our vacant property situation. I mean, that's just, this is my opinion.
And, uh, Mr. Ambas, I do appreciate that, but I have asked other municipalities that were actually going through the same situations that we were. And by putting that on, it actually improved. Uh, there's one street that was in, uh, Princeton that they were having such a problem with that they actually dug real deep in people's pockets. Now that street is actually one of the streets that most businesses will talk. So I mean, I can understand where you're coming from, uh, I really can, but I do believe that this is just something that we might need to do to help our city along. It's, it's not to sit down and dig into the, uh, the owner's pockets. It's actually to let the owner know that come to see us and see what we can do to help you to fill space or help you to get your business up to where it can be filled. It's not something that's supposed to be a penalty. It's supposed to be a help.
Well, and I, and I appreciate, and I appreciate the efforts you've, you've put into this, but I, um, I don't, I, I think the two hundred dollar registration fee plus the, uh, increase, you know, the four hundred dollars the next year and which advances the fees quicker than our current ordinance does, uh.
Well, the current ordinance that we have actually doubles every year. The only thing that's different is, is that.
It starts out.
Two hundred dollar fee at the beginning.
Yeah.
So it, it all doubles every year.
Yeah.
Past the ordinance that we have.
It's, it's not a huge difference. I, I understand that. But I, I, I think there are situations where that'll be a, a, a real hardship on, on some residents. And I'm not, I'm not sympathetic to vacant, vacant property. I know it's a, you know, it's prone to become blighted and, and all those kinds of things. I appreciate that and I recognize that, but I think it's a symptom of your economy versus, um, somebody not wanting to do the right thing. So I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't, I don't support this. And I, and I, again, appreciate the fact that we can, we can discuss items and not, I mean.
Well, I'm just wondering, can we not get with them and see if they are trying, at least trying to put it up for rent? I mean, nothing shows rent on none of the windows. And one business, she may, she didn't have to fix her or something in order to make it rentable. It might go a little better. And we can get with the people and buildings and find out how much they want. And if you're going to go too crazy, we're not going to rent them. I know it is. I think maybe if we can work with them and maybe they could try to rent it out, put it out there with, uh, Allison or something, so people, people can see what's available in Okeo.
Yeah.
Or whatever. I don't know. I just like to see if something happens, movement in some way. But they're not going to be able to come in here, put a whole lot of money in, rent it in in order to make money in Okeo for a while. I mean, you have to get started somewhere. If they go work with, or maybe up at S A C that they are improving their business, that's about the thing.
This, uh, this ordinance isn't new. I think we're, I, I'm not sure how we're thinking, but this is something that's been in place for, what, ten years? Close to ten years. We, we've not collected on it. We've not, for, for a while. I think we collected very little for the last year. So right now, it's obviously not effective. So I think that was the whole idea of trying to come up with something new to initiate, to get people, you know, I get exactly what you're saying, Bill. I, I agree a, a lot. People, there is hardship. There really is. Um, but there's also a lot of people still trying to rent buildings at high rates. I've heard some crazy rent totals here recently, and they say, well, they, I can't find anybody to put in it, but you're talking some crazy numbers too. So I think this kind of makes people a fair chance. So I would rather, so let's say I'm renting for two thousand and I can't get nobody. I'm going to be a little more fair and try to cut my rent down instead of paying a registration fee or something to the city. And maybe it gives somebody a better chance at a, at a cheaper rate to get a, a space rented. I give somebody a chance to open up something small that couldn't afford a fifteen hundred or two thousand dollar rent a month. Maybe the business owner says, well, instead of paying four hundred to the city, I'll just rent it out for half the price so I don't have to register. And, and put something in this building because if you haven't noticed, we have, what, eighty, eighty-seven commercials? Yeah, there's a lot of commercials.
About sixty-seven right now.
It's just empty and there's, there's no progress or there's no nothing towards it.
And I know of three or four residents right now that have been sitting for almost three years.
Absolutely.
All they're doing right now is letting other people move in it that ain't paying no rent or nothing else. And surprise, the houses ain't already been burnt down. I mean, this is what the ordinance is actually for. It's to protect the city from these sort of happenings. I think that what we're doing by raising, as we have, is actually making a statement through the city, we want their help. What I think. And without it, we had one in place, like you said, for almost ten years, done nothing yet.
It, it wasn't very effective.
So now let's do something different.
But I think charging more money is, is, is not going to have a better benefit. That's my opinion.
I mean, and I understand that, and I do appreciate your opinion. Uh, but the way I'm looking at it is, haven't had it effective for ten years. And now, if you don't register, we actually have a way to force that registry. Before, there wasn't. There was nothing in this ordinance to set down and force that registry. You had a hundred and eighty days to do it.
Mm-hmm.
You only got sixty.
It started out, it only five days.
Well, I, I didn't see that one. The one that I've looked through was a hundred.
It was changed.
I think it did change in two thousand and fifteen because the actual one was done in two thousand and twelve. And I think two thousand and fifteen is whenever y'all went to the hundred and eight. But I believe that this will be helpful for this city.
I would ask that if you do consider that, you at least have a ninety-day period of time for us to implement it. We don't have a system. We don't have a person or a system in place for it.
Well, I didn't, I mean, I, this, I mean, if we do, we've still got another thirty before we can do anything anyway. And then you're looking at another thirty to sixty before you'd even be able to even try to implement it. So you're still looking at three months, four months down the road before. It's not like it's going to change much. It still has to go before a public hearing. It still has to have a second reading. This is just to try to get the ball rolling. I mean, all we're waiting on now is whether or not we're voting to do it or not because it's already been amended and seconded, and we're just waiting on the vote.
Any other questions? Would you guys repeat your motions for the record, please?
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept the vacant building registry with the updated fees and the updated times.
Do we have a second?
I'll second them.
All those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, all opposed?
No.
You already has it. I just have a motion is adopted. Thank you. All right. Number two will be the consideration of replacement of naloxone distribution containers. One will be placed at Walgreens, from my understanding, already with the health department. So our discussion tonight would be if the city wants to put some on their property, wherever. We still want to do that.
This, this is something that the health department is paying for this?
There's, there's no cost or anything to us. We don't have to maintain it.
Is there, is there other municipalities that have this?
There are some. I couldn't tell you about them, but there are.
What, what are the liabilities with that? Say somebody comes up there and there's, and there's someone else has it. Should a liability is?
It's us. They're maintaining all of it. We're just providing locations, first.
Is that? I'm lost out in it, not enabling a crime. It's an illegal drug to do that, right? So we're not enabling a message if we're saying it's okay to do this. For giving you a spot that we allow this in city property to do this.
Well, yeah, what it would be, I mean, whoever took the illegal drug would take the naloxone, naloxone to save them. It's not.
Where's the suggestion to put it?
Is that for me?
Okay.
That's what we're just going to discuss. Whether if you wanted one or not. We don't want we wanted one. I believe it's Walgreens.
Out on East End? And out there, it's going to be one?
They're supposed to be placed in, um, I guess, frequent, where people would certainly overdose. Where, where they are in other areas where, I, I mean, I don't know that we have that, but it's where you find, you would find. I don't know if we have any property though.
Yeah, I don't know where that would be, that they frequently overdose. Most of the overdoses, uh, here and see come through are residential. It's not on Main Street. I, my personal opinion is, you know, apparently Walgreen, you said was going to put one there. Uh, I'm sure that you can walk into the hospital and get in the lock zone. You can walk in the police department and get in the lock zone. You can walk in the fire department or any fire truck and get in the lock zone. We keep it in every cruiser.
You can walk in the fire department or any fire truck and get in the lock zone. We keep it in every cruiser.
And not walk into the fire department. Carry that for our personnel only. We not run EMS, first responders, sorry. We don't offer it to them. We offer it to our people. We probably had an instance where. Police officers down and a firefighter about to be killed because of their exposure to that. So we essentially carry it for our own personnel. We didn't advertise to.
I didn't mean to. Bombard it with anybody coming down there asking for it. Across the street, you can walk in over there and of course.
Was a lot of people carrying the cars?
Yeah, they do.
Is it? I mean, is it something for east or is it something east? Because it sounds like it's available in a lot of places. I think Paula was just asking for us to. To be receptive to the to those. Uh, containers wherever they may be. I don't, I mean, she didn't specifically say that she wanted any. On our property at then. I don't know if she was planning on some specific places in the street. I'm not sure.
Just to me.
Now, how how do they get them out of the changer? Have to turn off or how does that work?
It's just like the blessing boxes that you see. You just open it up and it would be.
You can't let kids get out and play around and they can stop living like those hurt them any.
I believe there is a special way to get in there. I'm not exactly sure, but I don't think you can just open it. Should know about that.
Yeah, I don't know that there are negatives to it. I know a lot of people have them. It's been some good. But I don't know if we are. That point where.
You know, it's amazing. It's basically, it's popping out. Basically, where to get to it. I may be incorrect. This is something you guys can think about or you can make a decision on it tonight. I mean, I think we're covered either way. A lot of citizens have it unless Chief said there are places that you can get it, so. Bring this up later if we can.
I mean, is this something that uh the health department is always doing? Like. Let's just say in six months, we see that there's a need. Somewhere that we can say, hey. Is that a question to table this?
I'll second that.
Alright, motion and second that we table placement of naloxone distribution.
And definitely.
Definitely take this.
Definitely take. All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion's carried. Moving on to new business, we will consider changing the date of the November council meeting to November 4.
Our regular council meeting scheduled for November 11th, which is a holiday. That um is sort of similar to the losses for its employees. And that's fair. It's not a move that we changed.
I second it.
Do you have a motion and a second? Do we move our next city council meeting to November 4 instead of November 11th? All those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion's carried. Number four, L W C F City Park, the straw party deed authorization.
I'm gonna turn this over to Tyler to explain. Everything that happened with that.
So as you all may be familiar, we've talked about this a number of times. You've um. Authorized some authorizing resolutions for us to move forward. This is the. $400,000 total project uh to to refurbish the City Park Playground. Um, this is funding that comes uh from the National Park Service through the uh State Development Office. Um, so part of the stipulations, and we have discussed this, in fact, you all did vote on this, I believe, uh in a in a prior meeting. That part of the stipulations on the receiving of the money is that you then have to put restrictions on your deed for that particular property. It states that 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 property will henceforth and forevermore be used for a park. Uh, public, public use space. And so. Um, now we're moving forward. We've been awarded that. We're moving to the administrative portion. Before we can proceed. To bid and get this project moving, they require that we go ahead and get our deed updated. Uh, on the front end of the project, which essentially. Uh, it's just adding the restrictive covenants to the deed. Um, if any of y'all looked at the documents, you'll see. Um, our attorneys, um, we ran this through Bill File and and his brother Robert File. They recommended to us that the. The best, most proper way to do that was by way of a straw party deed to the building commission. Rather than just deeding it from ourselves to ourselves. Um, and so their recommendation was that we execute a deed from the city of Oak Hill to the Oak Hill Building Commission. Um. And in that deed is where we we actually update the entire description of the property because we have had a boundary survey that updated our description. And so we're kind of accomplishing two things at once. We're updating our. Description of the property based on our new boundary survey. And we're adding the restrictions that are required by the land and water conservation fund project. And so that deed goes to the Oak Hill Building Commission as a straw party and then immediately gets deeded. Back to the city of Oak Hill, uh and in its in its, it it will be at that point in its final state. Back with the city of Oak Hill, updated with the description and with the restrictive covenants on the deed. So um. The meeting of the Oak Hill Building Commission had already authorized or approved to do to to act as a straw party. Uh, and to receive the property and then immediately convey it back to us. That was in their last meeting. Um, and so if if council would approve. That process as well, then we can go ahead and get with our attorneys and have them execute that and get the. The appropriate signatures on those deeds. They'll be filed simultaneously. There's no gap in between filing those, so. Um, you'll have the straw party deed to the building commission and then back to the city. And then both get recorded consecutively at the courthouse. So there's no time that elapses uh in between there. So that's what we're asking for authorization uh to proceed with that straw party deed execution with. This item.
And so with this. Then we get what we need to finish.
That. That, yeah, the playground. So we're we're prepared. We're working with Thrasher Engineering. They're working on getting our final designs on that on that playground. This is the, you may recall, we presented this a couple of times to council. This particular project will, it won't replace all of the existing playground equipment, but it does add that section of ADA accessible equipment. And it will also go in and regrade, put in some drainage. And then fill the rest of the playground with the engineered wood fiber malt. So basically, it's gonna give. The remaining part of the playground a facelift and add the accessibility. There's also. Uh, some sidewalk bordering the playground that gets added in addition to the sidewalk that was just installed as part of the current project. Um, and uh um. Uh, some site furnishings. Uh, there's some benches with some shade canopies over top of them, a couple of picnic tables. Um, so that's that's kind of the summary of the project. But but this is the first step, uh aside from some other administrative paperwork we've had to do. Uh, we can't move forward. They will not authorize us to move forward to advertise for bids for contractors until we get this done. So. Uh, I I I think they've had situations in the past where they have authorized. Uh, the the recipient to proceed and then they never got the restrictive covenants done. So uh their policy is to get the get the deed covenants in place. Before they authorize uh proceeding with the construction on the projects.
So there's no cost to the city, correct?
Uh, what it's the the only cost to the city would be what we pay the attorneys. I mean, there's no, there's no other kind of legal fees. Yeah, it's just just legal preparation for the deed preparation. And then, of course, the the filing fees, they have to file the deeds at the capitol office.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make that motion then that we. Honor that straw party deed authorization to get this moving.
I second it.
Alright, we have a motion and a second considering approval of the straw. Party deed authorization. Any other questions? All in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Tyler. Tyler, consider approving the planning commission's recommendation to change the zoning from R2 to RR, two parcels of land located behind 335 Woodbridge Road.
The owners of this property, David and Sherri Kidd, and they are both being to mind and have questions for them. They're asking to have their property changed, but um two parcels of the property. To be changed from R1 to RR. R2 to RR, excuse me. And this will allow them to have some small animals. On the property and and as you can see from the map, it already adjoins our. Property, property on behind it is RR. Is that advertised? Has anybody been?
We had, someone came and spoke in favor of that one.
So it does make the size requirement with the 20 cars?
Yes.
The, are you familiar, senior manager, with the uh? What's the definition for what are, what is it like? I believe, at least five acres. Would that be satisfied if it joins or or, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
What what kind of animals were um?
Well, it's small animals like farm animals, small ones like goats, like that. And the properties behind us, they actually do have farm animals there. On the property right behind us, even the live with property beside of them, it's RR as well. Because they've also had goats before. So there are no houses behind where that area is. Um, it's going to be trying to get it. It's all. Wooden, yeah.
Other residents in that area.
They have already been notified, yes, and um they were notified by letter from the city and they.
Chris, y'all approve this to happen?
I I wasn't at that meeting. As far as I can speak, that's why I asked the question because I was not at that meeting, so I I don't know what the recommendation.
It was unanimous. I was at the meeting.
Well. I personally, I don't see why there would be an issue if it's already setting against an RR. It's. It's not like it's spot zoning. You're changing the whole thing to an RR. Uh, so me personally, I take a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the resounding. All those in favor?
Mr. Brown, could you uh? Could you pull up the definition of the RR? And excuse me, I didn't want to. Non-organized across our two.
Does that meet that?
It totaled two and a half acres. Between all four lots. Not more lots.
And we only asked for the back two, not where the house was. But if you combined it all together, we would have that. We own that much.
House splits, lots nine and 10. Or.
Those two.
Would order other neighbors, which were notified and had no problem. Back two lots are wooden, steep and uninhabitable.
Which was that one?
Uh, it doesn't say in partial information. This one approximates about 24 acres and just a little under that.
Yeah.
It's going to be close, but right here is.
So those. I don't like it. What was the other two?
Yeah, the two of these.
Yeah.
We were approached by our, to do this.
The other residents have had to have farm animals.
Right, yes, and all those across the street from where ours is, the Lively's. They, Mike Lively is here. Spoke for us and then the Reins, which is a little bit behind it, they do have a farm back there. They have big animals.
Yeah. I think that's all I'll say. Right.
He had to have his rezoned as well.
For farm and farm animals, it requires more. It's like, I think it's five acres. The farm.
It says animal house, written RR, that's it.
That's what, that's what we were just looking at. It says two. The minimum lot width has to be at least 200 feet.
I'm a. It's underpaid right there. We're talking about then two acres that. That could include. The joining RR.
I I think. As it says, the minimum area. But I don't.
I think. If you're in RR, it's not spot zoning, but it. And it says.
That's what I was saying. The thing I said about what I meant was about like the farm. If you're talking about putting a goat or something, I don't know that you could bring in like cattle and and horses. As you mentioned, like something later on, you couldn't bring in like cattle, horses, because under farm definition, it is a five acre. Minimum. So that wouldn't qualify. For like throwing a barn up and putting cattle and. Putting the head of cow in there or something. That it would be that.
No, no plans whatsoever of that.
Well, the reason why I think they stayed five acres because for one cow. It's actually a minimum of an acre and a half. You and everything you want to try to do is impaired. You would have to have at least five. Horses are two, two and a half.
Like I said, we we were just approached by our neighbors. Considered this and we.
Better to do it right, sir.
Any other questions? Any one good?
I made the motion to go ahead and change it to the RR.
You can say.
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried. Number six, to consider approving the planning commission's recommendation to select ACOM. As the consulting term for our comprehensive.
And the planning commission uh had received all the, we had three. Um, proposals. One was from ACOM. One was from Castle Levine and the other one was from WB. And um Allison had met with um. And, um, Allison had met with, um. A person from WVU at the extension office, they went over in depth, they went over each. Proposal and. And this planning commission recommends AECOM to be selected.
Do you know the rationale?
It just was a more robust plan, um.
It should be, because it costs a hundred thousand, over a hundred thousand more.
Yes, but WVU, um, is only doing the comp. They, I mean, it's only, they're going to check the boxes of what needs to be done. AECOM and House of Levine both have, and, and WVU did add in some other things, but. It is something for the, to help the area, to help fix the zoning issues that we have. With things being in wrong zone and some of that. Um, to give a guidance to how to go along in the future. And this is money we got from the county, a hundred fifty thousand.
Can you put up those dollar, those prices, so everyone can see what we need?
Where, where is this state?
They're out of Pittsburgh, I believe.
All the way down.
It's down very bottom.
It's right there.
Say, maybe our a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yeah. And with that one that they're suggesting, what is the difference? Because I was reading the one from WVU law. It's doing the zoning. And the comprehensive plan. So, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like Bill, what's the, the extra that's costing us another? Close to a hundred thousand dollars is what I'm looking at.
Just the help with the guidance and setting up a plan in the future. I mean, the, your comprehensive plan has to be something that you can live by and. Look at and when you're making a, a decision like you made tonight with the planning commission. You go to that plan, you go to your comprehensive plan, is that what we wanted? Is that what came out of the public hearings? I don't know how many public hearings WVU had. And I can't remember what, maybe.
The one from WVU was, they were doing a lot of the, if you looked at it, you see where they were doing. A, a lot of the municipalities around us.
Yeah, they're actually doing Lewisburg, Montgomery, Ansted, Fedfield, Golly Bridge.
So it would, I would tend to think that they would have a better grasp on the area. Of the needs of this area and what southern West Virginia, and their WVU. More local and the laws of West Virginia.
They're more law oriented. You're not going to get, I mean. It's whatever you don't want, but you're not going to get any extras. You're going to get exactly a comp plan that will exactly meet. The definitions.
Was this AECOM, were they aware that we had a hundred and fifty thousand?
Um, I'm, I'm, I didn't work with.
Just kind of sounds like it.
Well, we had to add, we had to ask them to come back. Once we were approved for the money, we did ask them to add more into it. We asked everybody to add more into it.
Talking. Close to ninety thousand, maybe different. And i- if you look at the AECOM, it seems like a lot of that is just, just like a lot of fluff, extra economic stuff. It's like we're paying a second person to help with economic development stuff.
And slide that down a little bit, so we can see everything that's being done in phase two and phase one, if you. Get it? So that's phase two.
Get phase two, please.
We previously used, it was our last comp plan. Have we ever used? Like WVU?
Didn't the, looking at the law clinic. But didn't they initially set up the, any conference? Then, uh, it did for the municipalities within the counties.
Well, I had heard something like that's the reason why I was.
Yeah, I, I think they did, and I, I, I. This is my opinion, but, uh. Jesse Richardson, who's a law professor with WVU, I, I, I personally have a lot of respect for him.
Well, I think the only thing is kind of going through mine is, you know, I'm, I'm looking at. As I had looked at what they had there, and then I actually got to look through the WVU law. And I, you're having maybe a couple of extra meetings, uh. I mean, I, I just don't see that there's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of difference between the two. I, I think.
It says, uh, for like.
It's fifty-seven, five. If you go with WB law, because if you add the twenty-eight, five and the twenty-nine, add phase one and phase two, it all totals out fifty-seven, five. But then you got a hundred and forty-nine, six for this one. I mean, we're looking at about ninety thousand dollars difference.
If you look at your, just the phase two alone, under the AECOM, it's eighty-two thousand, one hundred, and if you read it, it's. Torn in the city, setting up meetings, that's eighty-two thousand dollars, that costs more than the whole West Virginia's. Deal, I think. Perfect timing, um, I think that, uh. I don't think we could justify that, even if we gain a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the county commission, I don't think we just.
I don't.
I don't think we just go with it because of that, Allison. We'd like to hear your input.
Oh, I apologize, I just got here from my daughter's volleyball game.
We're on, uh, AECOM for a one hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay.
That was the planning commission recommendation. We were trying to figure out what was the big perk compared to the fifty-some thousand dollars West Virginia clinic.
Oh, sure, okay.
With you law.
Okay, and so you'd like me to speak to the differences between the two? Absolutely, so, uh, the difference between the two, part of it is, is experience and, uh, breadth of capabilities, honestly. So when you look at AECOM, um. The pros to that firm, um, one of it is going to be the size of the firm, the experience of the firm they've done, like. They have the comp plan for the city of Philadelphia, they had done several, I'm sure when you guys went through the proposal, you saw all the different comprehensive plans that they've done. Uh, throughout the United States, they've done planning throughout the world. You know, when you look at where we are as a city right now, and the potential we have for growth in the future. The difference in the two and how we felt the two were going to handle the city. Was AECOM is coming with a breadth of experience, with a whole lot of professionals from a cookie cutter plan. WVU is fantastic at what they do. At the same time, um, comparisons in the two, there's a, uh. You can bet on the plan that would come from WVU is going to be a plan you could recruit somewhere else. A little very similar there too. So when it comes to what is uniquely Oak Hill and what will bring us uniquely forward, AECOM has the ability to draw on. Situations that they've seen from other cities in other times and other places. Uh, that is unique to that firm compared to any of the other firms that the planning commission, uh, looked at. We were able to look at in general, or honestly, I think through the best United States. Um, another difference in those is going to be with AECOM, we can enter into what's called a master services agreement. So it says one forty-nine, six hundred. Uh, we, once we got the recommendation from the planning commission to, uh, to engage AECOM, obviously, we did not engage AECOM. But we started talking with them in particular a little bit more about it. And one of the things that we looked at, for example, for the vacant property study, uh, we can add that on to something that AECOM, as we get funding from other sources, that AECOM can help us with. And they have the capability to do that. The other thing that's great about AECOM is they also work with the State Department of Highways. And the state's metropolitan planning organizations, the NPOs, which are a big, um, a big. Channel for funding, the state government for West Virginia is using from this point. So we also kind of have that inside of understanding how those other bigger guys that we've got to work with are going to. Uh, are going to work for just from using AECOM. That was, that was the benefits to them. Now, if it's a matter of the total project costs. I don't think it's unreasonable at all for us to go back and say, hey, council. Was not comfortable with the, or wasn't clear with the costs and why these mattered, can you break them down and justify more? And honestly, we're going to be able to handle more of the, uh, community engagement part on our end, which means we're going to be able, we should be able to divert more funding towards, uh, that hundred fifty thousand dollar figure.
I just, I just want to make sure, because I read it all evidently, that. Phase two and phase one under the WVU.
Yeah, two different processes.
I, I, I looked at it too quickly.
I'll go back to that, please.
Twenty-nine thousand.
So, see, there's land, I mean, there's phase one, and it's twenty-eight, five. And whenever you go down to phase two, it's another twenty-nine.
Still ninety thousand, ninety thousand, a difference.
Yeah.
Almost a hundred thousand dollar difference.
Imagine either way, folks.
Ninety thousand is a lot of money. I thought, that's a big difference. I mean, to say that from someone like WVU, what they're, they're going to offer. To try to justify ninety thousand more on what she just said, uh, of, you know, more engaging, more community things, more experience, uh. I just, I can't see that we could justify that, uh. We don't have to go with it, but I'll make a motion to select WVU.
You need a second?
I'm sorry.
Motion and second, if we consider WVU's, it's a firm, all those in favor? Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried. You guys don't mind, I want to move MS four up to the top of our department, which you, that's something to talk about. Since you all most likely have, uh, read your department reports, and if the department heads them, have these things saved to do on the last road at the end of the meetings.
Okay, my, um. Information today is about small stormwater water pollution prevention tip. Breaking leaves onto a stormwater inlet creates more pollution of local streams and water waves. Not only do leaves contribute to stream pollution, they can cause localized flooding in the clogs. If they clog storm drains and pipes. Help protect nearby waterways from excess nutrients and never wreck leaves into a storm drain. Leaves can be a great source of nutrients for your property, so consider molting them into fertilizer for your yard or garden. However, a decaying mat of leaves on your lawn can expose it to mold and disease. If your lawn is covered with more than fifty percent of decaying leaves, consider bagging or composting the leaves rather than launching.
Do you have a department answer again? If we get a vote to accept all the department reports, please, for our motion?
Please accept all the department reports.
I'll second.
There's motion and second to accept all the department reports, all those in favor?
Uh.
Uh, all opposed? Counsel comments?
You have one lead that has, I don't have this, uh, Charlie. There's no stop sign at the corner lamp light or in lock alley, there used to be, said something. Steel edge. How cheap that's might, your way. On the campus of New River Elementary, there's several parents that have come to me that. There's some odd people, strangers, uh, adult men lurking around campus. And when they call Board of Education, Board of Education said they can't force. Get off the campus. Like favorite seeds. Us, these, uh, people just have that look that they're not there for, for a good reason. So with all the drugs that we have in the community, they're just afraid that a child might be exposed to something. So I, I don't know much how that works in schools.
Just having to call 911, report a suspicious person. I would think that the board of education, maybe they don't see, maybe they're in the classrooms, but. Either or vote them, just need to call 911. Suspicious person. I'm sure.
Reached out to the Board of Education, but they weren't concerned about it.
Well, we're concerned, so. 911 suspicious person, they'll be checked out.
Um. She questioned, did you, um? Review the, uh, altering vehicle ordinance for any enforcement problems? You may have had since that was. And I could, and could we put that? On the agenda, it has a. My first time ever, I believe, the sunset falls in it, and we need to start reviewing that for, uh. Amendment ordinance.
Memory, what's this, let me see.
It's the previous council, uh, enacted the ordinance, but that. On a certain date in some month, I think early in twenty twenty-five, it come, that if it's. If it's not amended, then the ordinance dies or goes away. The sunset's on.
And what, what is that ordinance, what's it called, Bill?
It's the, the ordinance that pertains to the altering vehicles, uh, in Oak Hill.
You had talked to me about that one other time, and I could not likely remember what you said, how that was. Just now.
And, and all, and I, I'm sorry, and, and also chief, if, if you. Not just the strict enforcement of it, but. You, and as a chief law enforcement officer in Oak Hill, if, you, you know, your opinion, is it? Good, bad, or indifferent, or?
I, I think. We haven't had very many issues at all, complaints. About ATVs, GTVs.
About ATVs, GTVs, we have had a few with maybe motor powered bicycles on the sidewalks, we're trying to address that. But the overall ordinance, I think there are a few aspects of it, maybe a few. Things that, that I would suggest changing, but I will look at it, and I will speak to some of our officers about that before the next meeting.
And, and I think, I've fielded some complaints about it too, but the. Generally, the complaints I've gotten have been, have been valid, but. You, but they were violations of the law.
Right, right.
Problem.
There are probably issues we were having before we even had the ordinance placed into effect. And, and, and I, I think we're still, we're always going to have people who violate the law. One time, my, my relatives, who post, but I hear that. It's been a problem, I hope we've. Maybe got it under control. But yeah, we'll look at it before next meeting.
I'd like to thank for the Wilson situation, Wilson, we appreciate you helping on that, Chief, thank you for the extra patrols on the high line. I've been having phone calls about that, which has been wonderful, um, any other announcements?
I just have a comment.
Yes.
I was gonna say, uh, I know we have Dreamless here, that is new, that does social media, is she also going to be doing like website stuff too?
Yes.
Okay, I'd really like to see, uh, Tim Buskis put on the council page, uh, because. Uh, it, it doesn't look like Tim right now, and doesn't have his name, so, Tim did not, it doesn't look like. So, uh, if we could do that, like social media stuff, I mean, some of the stuff I've seen her do looks very creative, very nice. But I would like to see like, we could, like our agenda, the announcement of our meeting, a lot earlier than a couple hours before the meeting. I think we need to post that the week before, as quick as we can, uh, and allow people to see what our agenda is, I know it's posted out front, but. I know a lot of people don't come up here and look at the side of the building, kind of just be a little more transparent with, with that kind of stuff what we can, but what, what I have seen so far with Dreamless, great.
And we just, so Dreamless Stevens.
Yeah, and if y'all need anything, I now have a city email, it's just media at oakhillwestvirginia.gov. If y'all have anything that y'all want done, or y'all have an idea, just send it to me, I am all for help, and as far as it being late. That is my fault, I'm trying to get everybody to go and contact me when there's meetings and stuff like that, so. The Mina doesn't have to be the referee going and relaying everything, I'm here to help, I'm not here to cause more issues.
Welcome aboard, you're probably going to need a, need a little makeup for a couple of these forehands, but. I could talk about that, any further, any other announcements?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, with the vacant building registry, where we have approved it, or to go to the second reading. I'd also like to see a workshop, kind of help the owners understand what we're here to do. And what we're trying to help them with, and that they might even be able to get with Allison and see about trying to get funding to help. Like I said, this is not something I'm going to sit down and use it as a punishment, we're going to use it to try to help. And that's what I feel that we need to do with it, so a workshop for the business owners, I feel would be a pertinent.
With us.
With, uh, with Allison. Well, and the council too, I mean, the council can be here, they can ask questions or whatever, I mean, I feel that that'd be relevant. And, uh, Allison would be able to help them with, you know. Uh, what they, she could probably help them with renting, or I know some of the businesses need some. Repairs, that she may be able to help them and guide them in the ways that they can get funding to help with that.
You guys can come up with a great date. You want yourselves and give it to me. All right, well, anyone else? Thank you all for coming out tonight, and please, uh, keep our code enforcement officer in your prayers, Ben, he was in an accident, he's probably down for a couple of days. All minds are clear, we are hereby adjourned, good night.